So we're gonna be in Acts, despite the fact that most of those passages I handed out are not. Because we're gonna be looking at the things that the things they understood and the things that Peter was trying to help them understand about Yeshua based on what they knew and what they understood in Torah and in the prophets, so. Last week, we talked about the whole idea of the sin and the sickness, and that sin leads to sickness, but not all. All sickness is a result of sin, but not all sin leads to specific sicknesses in an individual, okay? That because of sin in the world at large, we are broken people, we are not complete, we are not whole because of sin at large. We can understand out of John chapter 5, where he heals the man by the pool, and he says, "See, you're well now, so stop sinning if something worse doesn't happen to you." And we have John chapter 9, where the disciples ask him about a blind man and say, "Who sinned him or his father?" His parents and Yeshua says, "Neither, he was this way that God might be glorified." So we have the one that seems to correlate sickness with sin, and the other that says, "No, this particular sickness isn't because of sin." It's not their sin anyway, not individually, so we cannot put a direct link between an individual committing specific sins and specific sicknesses, even though there's an awful lot of that out on the web right now. There's a lot of, I call it victim blaming, because that's kind of what it is. Yes, it's true that there are relationships and correlations between certain things and certain illnesses, okay? Yes, there's direct kind of relate, it looks like a direct relationship, but a correlation is not a cause. Just because it correlates, just because it goes together, doesn't mean the one causes the other. It could actually be the other way around. A certain type of sickness or a certain type of physical difficulty may make the other more difficult. I saw one recently, and it was talking about different types of illness, and it said that worry, excessive anxiety and worry, which is, worry is a sin, right? That worry leads to stomach problems, okay? Well, how about if stomach problems lead to worry? Do we really know that that's a direct cause and effect? We don't. I do know that when we worry, it changes chemicals in our body, and those chemicals cause an effect that happens in our body, and yes, people who are prone to worry are prone to stomach upsets. And I know I had an ulcer when I was in the fifth grade. Yeah, no, or at least that's what they told me it was. Come to find out, years later, it might have been my gallbladder, who knows? But my gallbladder had been bad very long time, and by the time they got to it, it really wasn't a gallbladder anymore, is what he told me. It was one of those things, God kept me for years. In fact, never mind. But the reality is, yeah, the reality is that we can say, we can see these correlations, but we really cannot say that person has cancer because they sinned. We can't. Nor can we say that person didn't get healed because they had a sin of a lack of faith. And I know of someone in town right now who's been involved in healings and stuff.
What is it smoking?
Well, tell me that smoking is, show me where the scripture says thou shalt not smoke. I mean, honestly, yes, smoking does lead to cancer. We know it does. It poisons the lungs. But, and I was taught that smoking was a sin. But I was also taught that going to movies is a sin.
You had to wear lipstick and...
I was also taught that wearing makeup was a sin, to a degree. Now, that kind of gave way later in my life, but, but there was a point at which, and I remember all the scare tactics and all of the, you know, you're gonna go blind from wearing mascara. Yeah, you know, this girl over here got an eye infection because she, well, yeah, that girl over there may have, you know, not taken care of her stuff properly, I don't know. But we used to scare, they used, these scare tactics, if we don't like what someone's doing, use a bad scare tactic, tell them how sick it'll make them, and you know, maybe their behavior will change to what you like. The problem with that is it's not biblical. We cannot say that a sin leads to a specific, that if you have adultery, if you commit adultery, you're gonna have this kind of illness. We can't do that. But there are people who do. There are people who do, and there are people that will tell you that if I prayed for you and you're not well, that's your fault, not mine. And if I prayed for you and you continue using your medicine, well, obviously, you don't have any faith, so therefore, it's your fault, you're not healed. So you should stop taking your medicine because I prayed for you. No, I'll stop taking the medicine when the doctor says I've been healed. Give me confirmation. I'm not a courtesy follower. I don't do courtesy slain in the spirit stuff. I don't do courtesy healing either. I'm not gonna tell somebody I'm 100% better when I'm not, and there were these poor guys out of, anyway, poor guys that came through and tried to pray for me over my back. Someone sent them to me, because you know, they were having people raise your hands if you have this issue, whatever. I hadn't raised my hand, hadn't said a word. I saw someone go talk to them and whisper something. Next thing I know, they make a beeline for me. Great. That's not the leading of the Holy Spirit. Number one. Number two, they're praying for me and they're pushing down. Now, this is not too long after I'd had a bad rear-end car accident, so my neck was really bad, and my back was, my back is still not healed all from that, but it's better now, right? Want you to turn your head from the left side to the right. Let's see how far you can go now. Well, pray some more. Let's do it farther. And then one of them tried to help me try, I said, "Stop!" "I work for a chiropractor. I do not want you undoing what he's doing." "Well, we're praying for you, so you need to be able to test it and prove it." And I said, "I understand that. If I could move my head without pain, I would." "Don't think I want to." You know, the whole time, the whole church is watching, and I'm going, "I'm not faking a heal," you know, I didn't say it, but all I could think was, "I'm not faking a healing for anybody." And it hurt. So not everyone who says, "Be healed," does it result in healing. Okay? Just because it works here doesn't mean it's gonna work here in the same way every time, all right? I just, just gotta say that. Does God want us healed? Absolutely. He wants us whole and complete in front, before Him. He wants us that way. But I don't think this lame man who jumped up was faking it. Nor do I think it had anything to do with his faith, nor do I think it had anything to do with the faith of the apostles necessarily. It had everything to do with the word of knowledge God gave Peter when Peter spoke to him and said, "Get up." "In the name of Jesus of Nazareth." "The name of Yeshua of Nazareth. Get up and walk." It had everything to do with the authority that Peter had. I don't see that same authority among most of the faith healers of today. I just don't. God created us for wholeness, but because of sin, we don't have wholeness. Those of us who are, have accepted Yeshua as our Savior, we have been given a wholeness in our spirit, but that doesn't mean our bodies have been given that wholeness yet. Because we all get sick and die anyway. We do. The reality is, we will be resurrected. That's when we will have that wholeness completely. We have this idea, and this is one of the things that I read Tom Bradford wrote and talks about in his study of the book of Acts, that we tend to think of the goal of the gospel being revenge, being redemption. Being redeemed is our goal. But he sees it a little different. Our redemption is a means to maintain, to attain the goal, which is actually wholeness before God. See, God cannot have anything in His presence that is not whole and complete. That's why the lame man couldn't be in the temple, he had to be at the door. Because he was not whole and complete. So the whole thing is not about our being redeemed so that we can be redeemed. It's redeemed so that we can be whole, so that we can come into His presence. It's all about getting us into His presence. That's the goal. That's a little bit different of a goal. I don't remember if we talked about this much, but in the day of Yeshua, in the Jewish world, the idea of a physician or a doctor was still fairly new. The Greeks brought about what we know as modern medicine started with the Greeks, and it moved into the, and it was added to what we know as modern medicine in our world, world, and that's not the Chinese medicine, which developed differently, but there's some similarities. There really are some similarities, just not as much as there could be. China, China has a little bit different approach to a lot of it, which sometimes I think is better, but that's my opinion. In the day of Yeshua, just as, just as there is today, the idea that a medical doctor, it was almost seen as if a righteous person goes to God for healing because God will heal the righteous. Now, if you're unrighteous, you can go to a physician, and maybe they can help you. But if you're righteous, you don't have to go to a doctor. You can go to God, and he'll heal you. There was that idea, Judaism, well, I see that idea today. In fact, I ran into a conversation about that on one of the, one of the forums that I'm part of regarding the whole idea of the word pharmakia, and that it is again being used as if modern medicine is pharmakia. Not understanding pharmakia was not just a mixing of ingredients. Modern medicine is a mixing and a moving of ingredients and distilling ingredients from different things. We distill ingredients from certain plants, and then we get that chemical, and then we manufacture that chemical, and sometimes we make a fake one, but for some people, that's actually better, and for some people, it's not. But pharmakia, where the scriptures is talking about, do not know, no, pharmakia is commanded against. It's not talking about what we use as modern medicine, that's not what it's talking about at all. It's talking about the use of compounds, the use of chemicals, plants, oil mixtures, whatever, in a way to induce a state of body or state of mind that would allow us to have visions and dreams and have spiritual experiences. And you guys probably remember the LSD craze better than I do, because I'm a little younger. But the big LSD craze that went about in the 60s, and the whole use of that was to get an alternate experience. And it was even used in psychology. It was tried in psychology to help heal people. And I have a friend that I had gone to school with, really sweet young gal. Our sophomore year of high school, someone slipped her, slipped some LSD in one of her drinks. And it threw her into an instant schizophrenic type visualization, hallucinations, I mean, and, and she never fully healed. Never fully healed. Now, I honestly think it probably triggered something that was already there waiting to be triggered at some point, might have, she might have developed schizophrenia older, I don't know, but I do know that her whole family still blames the LSD because schizophrenia really did not run in their family that much. I mean, there were a couple way back, but you know, nobody talked about them or nobody knew about them. But she was never the same. The pharmakia that it talks about when it says, "Thou shalt not," is talking about using herbs, using something to attain an altered state of consciousness so that we can talk to God and have God talk to us. That is not the way we talk to God.
Kind of like what they do in witchcraft. That's why it's called witchcraft, because they make, it's more of a spell. They say certain words over it too, you know, they, and they make these potions.
Yes.
That's what it is, because it does something to alter consciousness and cause, you know, whatever that person's looking for.
Right. Anytime, and this is one of those things that I try to help people understand, and I don't, I don't know any other way to explain it other than this. We use specific oils for specific things. Usually based on the way the Holy Spirit directs us. When you're using essential oils, there's certain essential oils that work against headaches, some that work against, I mean, there's the thieves' oil, which is really good against just general viruses. There's specific essential oils that work for certain things. That's a medication, that's kind of a medicine, the oils thing. I see that more as a medicine. The things that we do, it's not the same, but the difference between witchcraft and prophetic act is in witchcraft, I'm putting together a spell in order to attain a specific result that I want. Prophetic act is more like God says, "Do this, and I will do that." But it has to start with God. Cannot be getting the result I want. In, at the time of Yeshua, there was this whole thing about righteousness gets healing, sin does not. They didn't for sure trust physicians. They didn't trust all of that because they, well, just as much as we have today, there were medicine men, shall we say, there were those who used the magic arts to heal. And medicine, in some ways, through the generations, has gone through these different steps of that. I mean, bloodletting wasn't exactly really healthy, and they say that probably our first president died from being, having his blood let too much, literally, George Washington, because he had been sick for a lot of things. And he might have actually overcome that last infection. But they drained him because they thought letting the blood out would be letting the bug out, you know?
Here's a movie with the physician, kind of showing you how it, like, it started. Wasn't the gentleman Jewish or something who was going to seek these higher education to become a physician?
I don't know.
There's any truth to the movie. I was wondering if anybody else saw it. It's a good movie, though.
I don't know. There, there, the physicians that we, as we know them today, kind of started in Greece, in the Greek or Roman world, and they started keeping track of what helped and what didn't, and they had ideas, and some of it along the same oriental lines, that there are, there are lines in the body that have certain energies and da-da-da-da, and you'll see some of that, by the way, in Jewish mysticism. Some of that has made its way now in a Jewish mysticism. It didn't used to be trusted, didn't used to be accepted, but it has become more accepted, recognizing that God has created our body, and God has given us certain things, and the whole idea was that the reaction to Jude, in Judaism and the reaction in the whole world, was a readaptation of thinking to recognize that not only did God heal, but God sometimes uses medical knowledge. He sometimes uses scientific knowledge. He sometimes uses these other things to help us heal. So while physicians at the time of Yeshua in some parts of the world were highly esteemed, at the time of Yeshua, it was still a little big battleground going on in Judaism as to, do we esteem them or do we skew them? Do we respect them? Do we see them as what God has provided to help us get better? Or do we see them as a distraction from our going to God? And that was still up in the air. Some, some accepted it, some did not. And then we have Yeshua comes along, come along, and what does he do? He heals. Let's read the third chapter of Acts. I'm gonna go ahead and start at the very beginning, and I'll just, we'll just read the whole chapter for now. "Peter and John were going up to the temple at the ninth hour of the time of prayer. A man lame from birth was being carried. Every day, they used to put him at the temple gate called Beautiful so he could beg for zedekah from those entering the temple. When he saw Peter and John about to go into the temple, he began asking to receive zedekah." Or alms, or a gift for the poor, basically. "Peter, along with John, looked straight at him and said, 'Look at us.'" "So he gave them his attention, expecting to receive something from them. But Peter said, 'Silver and gold I do not have, but what I do have, I give to you.'" "In the name of Yeshua, Amashir HaNazarit." "Get up and walk." "Then grabbing him by the right hand, he raised him up, and immediately the man's feet and ankles were made strong. Jumping up, he stood and began walking, and he went with them into the temple, walking and leaping and praising God. And all of the people saw him walking and praising God. They began to realize he was the one who used to sit begging for zedekah at the beautiful gate of the temple. And they were filled with wonder and astonishment over what had happened to him. While he was clinging to Peter and John, all the people together came running toward them in the place called Solomon's Portico. But when Peter saw, he responded to the people. 'Men of Israel, why are you amazed at this? Why do you stare at us as if by our own power or godliness we had made this man walk? The God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, the God of our fathers, has glorified his servant Yeshua, the one you handed over.'" "'The one you handed over and disowned before Pilate, though he had decided to release him. But you rejected the holy and righteous one. You asked for a murderer to be granted to you. You killed the author of life, the one God raised from the dead. We are witnesses of it. Now, through faith in the name of Yeshua, his name has strengthened this man whom you see and know. Indeed, the faith through Yeshua has given this man perfect health in front of you all. Now, brothers, I know that you acted in ignorance, just as your leaders did. But what God foretold through the mouth of all His prophets, that His Messiah was to suffer, so he has fulfilled. Repent therefore in return, so your sins might be blotted out, so times of relief might come from the presence of Adonai, that he might send Yeshua, the Messiah appointed for you. Heaven must receive him until the time of the restoration of all things that God spoke about long ago through the mouth of His holy prophets. Moses said, 'Adonai, your God, will raise up for you a prophet like me from among your brothers. Hear and obey him in all that he shall say to you. And it shall be that every soul that will not listen to that prophet shall be completely cut off from the people. Indeed, all the prophets who have spoken from Samuel on have announced these days, for you are the sons of the prophets and also of the covenant that God cut with your fathers, saying to Abraham, 'In your seed shall all the families of the earth be blessed.' God raised up his servant and sent him first to you to bless you all by turning each of you from your wicked ways.'" Now, last week, we talked about the silver and gold have I none. We talked about where he was at in the temple. We talked about the use of the phrase jumping and leaping and praising God, right? That that was directly out of, out of the prophets, and we're gonna see some more things that are directly out of the prophets tonight. Want us first to note Peter is very, very quick to tell the people, "I'm not a doctor." I don't even play one on TV, right? He's very quick to say, "I didn't do this. Why are you looking at us? Men of Israel, why are you amazed, and why do you stare at us as if by our power or godliness we made this man walk?" First thing he does is say, "It ain't about me." It isn't me. First thing he does is say, when they're looking at him, says, "It's his servant, Yeshua." It's not by our power, it's not by our godliness. We're not magicians, we're not physicians, we're not healers per se. We are representatives of someone else. Because he's, and he says, "The God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, the God of our fathers." Now, he's telling them it's the same God we've always had. This is our God that's done this. Has glorified his servant, Yeshua. The one you handed over. And it says in verse 16, "And now through faith in the name of Yeshua." "In the name of Yeshua." This man is made whole. That phrase, "in the name of," shows itself 23 different times in the book of Acts. First, we need to understand it's not a magical phrase. Any more than mixing the right oil is what's gonna bring about a healing if we pray for someone and anoint them with a specific oil. It's not the oil that heals. It's not our prayer that would heal. It's not us. It's God. It always has to be in the name of Yeshua. It always has to be God. It can't be about us. "In the name of" literally means "in the authority of." To do something in someone's name, it meant that you were functioning in their authority, functioning in their power. All these places in scripture where it says, "in the name, in the name, in the name, in the name," it's not talking about a specific pronunciation of a name. It's not talking about how we say it, or whether we get it right, or whether we use the yorhe vavhe, or whether we don't, or whether we say yahu shua, yahu shua, yahu shua. I'm sorry, there's 100 different variations of it. Most of them are full of, most of them are bogus. Most of them have about as much historical understanding as the stuff that's in a book that someone has given us, and I had it over here a minute ago. The Fossilized Customs book by Lou White, where there's no documentation.
It's just interesting, though.
It's interesting, it is. I've, I've looked at it. And it, and it's one of the books that was in this pile of books that was just given to us. And it is, it's interesting stuff. It's great conjecture, but where's the document proof? Where's the historical reference? Show me where you found this. This last week, in the last two weeks, a couple of teachers have come out with some really interesting stuff. Do I name names? Might as well. They name names. Nehemiah Gordon, who is a carite, first of all. He began kind of as messianic, but he has renounced the name of Yeshua as Messiah. I don't know.
I have a lot of friends who are following him right now. I don't understand it.
He has ren, and this is one of the reasons I don't understand either. He has rejected Yeshua as the Messiah. He still says he's a prophet. He still thinks he was a great teacher. He says he could have been a Messiah. But every generation has potential messias. That's the line of traditional Judaism, okay? Except that Nehemiah Gordon also fully rejects any rabbinical Judaism. He is a modern sadgissi, in a sense.
I don't care for him. I just, I, it's like, I don't understand why all these people love this stuff.
He has made a relationship and works very closely with another big teacher in the messianic movement named Michael Rude. Now, Michael Rude is as rude as they come.
He what now?
Michael Rude.
I've heard of him. I have a staff.
He is as rude as they come. He really is. I know a man that used to work for him when he had offices in Arizona. That man ended up going to jail for a season over embezzlement and fraud charges that really should have been given to Michael Rude. Because he was just doing what he was told to do, and he'd never been a bookkeeper. He had no clue. He was following orders. He didn't know what he was doing was illegal, honestly. But ignorance is know. And of course, he had no documentation or proof that Rude told him, or that organization told him to do anything. So therefore, he went to jail because they said, "Oh, we never told him any of that stuff." So there's no documentation of that, and he did, by the way, publish all this stuff, and he did try to make things right, and everybody outlawed him. Literally, he got blackballed out of the messianic movement because of the way he treated Michael Rude. I'm sorry. I think I know who the charlatan is, and it wasn't this guy. Michael Rude has always, he's a grand. Well, you know that phrase that, that, there's. You can't fool all the people all the time, but you can fool some of the people, you know, you. And there's a fool born every minute. And that whole concept of. I, if, if the show is big enough, if the show is bright enough, if the show is wild enough, somebody's gonna believe it.
He's very theatrical too.
Beyond theatrical.
I'm not a Michael Rude fan.
Yeah, I'm not either, well, and I haven't been. The first time I heard him, there was something in my spirit that just. It's down here, it's in my gut. It's not my heart, it's not my head, I hadn't, I just, my, I, I literally wanted to vomit. And it was like, okay, something's not right with this. Now, I have friends who really love him, think he's wonderful.
The one in Montana, that whole group?
Yes, those, these two, these two have gotten together. And in fact, I, I'm a little disappointed in some of the Hebrew roots teachers, because they've just done this big. Conference thing in the Midwest about end times, and there's good named people there that, people that I respect. And they were part of this, put on by Michael Rude and Nehemiah Gordon, and I'm like, ah, how dare, how could you associate with them? But anyway, they've come out with this wonderful new thing, they have discovered these documents from the Vatican. That have the proper pronunciation of God's name. It's a Hebrew version of the book of Matthew. No, it's not. It's a fourteenth century forgery.
I was gonna say that, the Vatican has.
And it's online. And anybody can access it. Through the Vatican Library, online resources. That they've discovered, this is wonderful, however, other scholars have come out and looked at it and said. This is definitely not a first century document. First of all, first century, they weren't using the Nacud yet, which are the vowel markers. They weren't there, they weren't in Hebrew yet. Veil up. Until after the time of Christ, a couple hundred years after Christ, I don't remember the document, anyway. The whole thing is a fraud. But they've come out with it. And the people that are calling him out on it and calling it frauds are getting nailed. Right and left. The whole thing is that they believe and they are trying to prove. That somehow or another Judaism has stolen God's name from us, and by stealing God's name from us, they have stolen his power and authority. From us.
Give me a break.
I agree. Give me a break. The authority and the power is in God, not in how you pronounce the name. Just because you think you can pronounce it right, does not mean you're gonna have any more authority than someone else. Who's actually walking under the Spirit's direction. And says, God said, duh. Whatever name you use. It's not in the name. It's in the person. And traditional Judaism, rabbinic Judaism understands that. To the point that one of the reasons we don't pronounce the four-letter name, the tetragram. Is not because it's too holy for us, it's that by putting God, by giving him that name and that name. As his the name. We've actually limited God, and we're putting him in a box that says, this is all he is, when he is beyond that even.
But supposedly, nobody knows his name, it was forgotten as such. So how, why were we saying that name as his name if it's probably not his name?
But it's not fully forgotten. The Yodhe Vavhe is an abbreviation of the full. What, thirty-two, I don't remember how many letters long the full name was that was pronounced at the temple, but. It's not Jehovah. It's not Yahweh necessarily, it's not Jehovah, it's not Yahushua, it's not. All of these other things, that's all coming out of bad. Bad journalism, number one. But also bad doctrine in thinking that we can put this into a magic formula. Because that's where it comes back to. When Peter said, it's faith in the name of his servant, the glorified servant Yeshua. He's not using it as a magic phrase. He's not telling them that's what it is. So just because we pray in Jesus' name. Doesn't mean our prayers are gonna get through. If that's your way of doing it. In Jesus' name, amen. The reason prayers are effective. The scripture tells us the effective prayer of a righteous man. A prayer of a righteous man is effective and avails much. And the righteous man whose righteousness we stand in is Yeshua, and it's because of his righteousness that our prayers are heard. Because none of us can be that righteous. It's because of his righteousness. But it's not because I pronounce a name, or I say a magical phrase. It's because I'm standing in his righteousness, because I stand in his righteousness, I know God will hear me. So it's an authority issue. Peter wants them to know. Well, we, we need to know who he's talking to first of all, and he says, men of Israel. He specifically says men, because he's not in the court of the Gentiles, he's not in the court the women were allowed in, this is in Solomon's Portico. This is farther in, this is the men's court. And these were all good Jews that were there. No Gentiles yet. He's telling them. Don't look at us. It's the God of Abraham. Isaac. And Jacob. Who glorified his servant, Yeshua. The one you handed over. The concept of us changing in power. And I'm just gonna read this whole paragraph, because I think the way he phrases it is good, this is. These are my notes with, I, I literally printed off all of his notes and added all of my notes all over the place of other stuff from other places, so. Yeah, that's, that's what I've done, it makes it easier. But the way he says this makes, the concept of power belonging to God the Father. Being given to Yeshua the Son. Can sometimes be difficult to grasp. Because we've kinda got it mixed up with some earlier things. Even some of the earliest church fathers who determined that if the father gave his son his authority and power. That meant that Jesus now carries what his father used to have. But willingly gave up. That's kind of a strange pattern, right? Okay, here's why. The kind of thinking is what results when Yeshua is wrongly cast into the Greek cultural mold, because in the Greek gods pantheon. A father God would give power to his son. But whatever power he gave to his son, he no longer possessed. The father God no longer had that particular power, then the son God could use that power even against his own father. Just like in earthly kingdoms, as the older, as the king gets older and weaker, and he gives his son authority, sometimes that son would take advantage of that and even kill his father off earlier, so he could have more authority. Right? It happened in the human world. Well, in the Greek world. Gods were just humans bigger. Stronger. They made their gods to be like us. We, and, and we do that, we look at God as if he is human in some ways. And that's exactly what they did, their gods were all like humans, they were but little different. So anyway, the idea was that if the Greek, if the father gave the authority to the son, now the father could no longer function in that authority, that was now the, the son. So don't bother praying to the father, pray to the son. Well, some of us might think that's a little bit different, and we've never really heard a pastor teach us that. In terms of the understanding of, of the biblical father and our biblical son. The implication is still there in some of the mainstream ideologies and ideas of many of the mainstream denominations. Why else would we see Jesus as important and the father no longer important? Why do we stop at Jesus? When Yeshua is the one who said, I came to bring you to the father. How many of us really go through Yeshua to the father, or how many of us stay with Yeshua? And that was one of those things that was a first light bulb for me moving into this. Was that recognition that Jesus said, hey, I came to bring you to the father. Worship the father. It's for the father, it's for the sake of the father. To bring you a relationship with him.
Was to the father.
To the father, he never told us to pray to him. Not once. Pray in my name. Pray in his authority, pray in his righteousness. He puts his name on us so that when we stand before the father, we are him. To the father. Okay? There are ideas that have come across into Christianity. That kinda go with that whole Greek mindset, you know? Like, well, we need the Old Testament, we need the New Testament. The Old Testament is good, it's got some interesting stories, it gives us some character of lost studies, but you know, really, you don't have to study the Old Testament, it's all in the New Testament. Right? New Testament only. Not realizing that most of the New Testament is quotes from the Old Testament expanded. We have an angry father. And the forgiving, loving Jesus. Right? Have you seen that in churches? In the way we. God the father's all about law. Oh, but we're not under law, we're under.
Grace.
Grace. God is the judge, oh, don't worry about God the judge, because Jesus is my defense.
What's that, what they always say, oh yeah, it was nailed to the cross. You don't do those things anymore, because it was nailed to the cross, where does it say that?
It says, the judgment against us according to the law was nailed to the cross, it does not say the law was nailed to the cross. It's a, it's a misunderstanding. Of the Jewish nature of what Paul wrote. The judgment was nailed to the cross. And all they see is the law. But the judgment was nailed to the cross. We deserve death. Our death was nailed to the cross. This whole mindset, this whole Hebrew mindset. Is totally different than that Greek mindset. In the Hebrew mindset. Yeshua was Jewish, and all of these people are Jewish that he's talking to, and so when he says, the God of our fathers glorified his servant Yeshua. They've got a different understanding of what that means. When he's, when it says that God the Father gave authority to Jesus, they understand it differently, here's the difference. The Middle Eastern culture. The, the relationship between a father and son. The family patriarch bore all the power in the family until he became completely incapacitated or he died. He had all authority, just like father has all authority. Has our father God become incapacitated or died? I don't think so. Other the way some people act, they might wish he had, and there are some actually who believe that Yeshua was the father in the flesh, and therefore he did die. Okay, that was a whole different, that's a whole different. If at a certain age of maturity, the firstborn son is worthy enough to handle the father's affairs. Then the father at a sole discretion will give the son authority and power to act as his proxy. In whatever capacity he decides. In that case. The son is acting in the authority of the father. He has the authority of the father, that authority's been given to him, but if he screws it up. The father can take it right back and would take it back. The son cannot use it against his father. As they could do in the Greek world. Does not mean the father has given away his authority. In that he transferred it to his son. It means he shares authority with his son. The heavenly father and the son portrayed to us in the Bible, we need to recognize that, think in terms of that's what is intended. The father holds and retains all power and all authority, he still holds all power and all authority. The scripture says, he has given power and authority to his son, Yeshua, who sits at his right hand. Yeshua acts as this father's shliach, or his agent. And it's interesting that in this passage. When Peter is talking about who. Brought the healing, he refers to Yeshua as a servant. Another word for that would be shliach. As an agent. He's glorified his agent, Yeshua, his servant, Yeshua. That's the way a son. Who functions in the authority of his father was viewed. Besides that, using that phrase, the servant. His servant. Brings about a whole bunch of other prophecies. Isaiah forty, we're gonna read some out of Isaiah. Isaiah, well, we got several Isaias, these are all out of Isaiah. Isaiah forty-two, one through seven, we might as well just flip to Isaiah for a while.
See my servant, who I've upheld, my chosen one, my being has delighted in. I have put my. You know, this is harder to read than the scriptures.
I'm sorry, do you wanna get a different Bible? We have a, I, I have the.
Change it, I, I put my spirit upon him, he brings forth right ruling to the nations. He does not cry out, nor lift up, nor cause his voice to be heard in the street. A crush reed, he does not break, the smoking flax, he does not quench. He brings forth right ruling in accordance with truth. He does not become weak or crushed until he has established right ruling in the earth. And the colts lands wait for his Torah. Thrust up the, the L who created the Shemaien and stretched out, stretched them out, who spread forth the earth. And that which comes from it, who gives breath to the people on it and the spirit to those who walk on it. I, I guess would be Adonai, have called you in righteousness, and I have hold of your hand and guard you and give you for the covenant to the people, for the light to the Gentiles. To open wide eyes, to bring out prisoners from the, from the prison, those who sit in darkness from the prison house.
Behold my servant, my chosen one, when Peter uses the phrase, his servant. They would know this song. Isaiah wrote about the servant, the one that God delighted in, the one that his spirit was upon. The one who was not gonna make a big ruckus. Who's not gonna fight back. But who will establish justice. Who will bring about the Torah. Or the teachings of God. Who will give breath. Who is going to be that light to the nations. He's saying this is Yeshua. Isaiah forty-three, verse ten. Single verse. Who has that one?
You have it? Well, I think I do. Okay, you are my witnesses, says Adonai, and my servant whom I have chosen, so that you can know and trust me and understand that I am he. No God was produced before me, nor will any be after me.
My servant that I have chosen. So that you may know and believe me. The father. Isaiah forty-nine.
Is it two, oh, eight?
One through seven, we're gonna start at the beginning on this one, now what was? I've got forty-nine, one through seven, okay. I've got forty-nine, one through seven, we're gonna read pretty much. One through seven and then eight through thirteen, so one through seven says this. Listen to me, islands, pay attention, people far away. Adonai called me. Adonai called me from the womb, from my mother's belly, he named me. He made my mouth like a sharp, sharp sword. In the shadow of his hand, he hid me, he made me a polished arrow, he has hidden me in his quiver. He said to me, you are my servant in Israel, in whom I will be glorified. But I said, I have labored in vain, I have spent my strength for nothing and futility, yet surely justice do me is with Adonai. My reward is with my God. So now says Adonai, who formed me from the womb to be his servant, to bring Jacob back to him, to gather Israel back to him. For I am honored in the eyes of Adonai, and my God has become my strength. So he says, is it too trifling a thing that you should be my, be my servant to raise up the tribes of Jacob? Restore the preserved ones of Israel? So I will give you as a light to the nations, that you should be my salvation to the ends of the earth. Thus says Adonai, the Redeemer, the Israel, their holy one, to the one despised. To the one the nations abhor, to the servant of rulers. Kings will see in our eyes. Princes will also bow down because of Adonai, who is faithful, the holy one of Israel, who has chosen you. Go ahead and read verses eight through thirteen.
Thrust at Adonai, in a flavorable time, I shall answer you, and in the day of deliverance, I shall help you. I'll guard you and give you for a covenant of, of the people, to restore the earth, to cause them to inherit. The ruin inheritance. To say to the prisoners, go out to those who are in darkness. Show yourself, let them feed on the ways, and let their pasture be on all bare hills. They shall not hunger, nor thirst, neither heat or sun shall, sun strike them. For he who has compassion on them shall lead them, even by fountains of water guide them. And I shall make all my mountains a way and my highways rise up. See these come from far away, and see those who. Those from the north and the west, and these from the land of Shemin. Sing, oh, Shemaien, rejoice, oh, earth, and break out in singing, oh, mountains. For Adonai shall comfort his people and have compassion for his afflicted ones.
The servant. Look at all the stuff that the servant is promised. And we know that there's a part of this that was actually about Isaiah himself, the prophet being a servant. But it goes way beyond Isaiah. Just like David's writings, a lot of times, what he wrote is prophetic beyond just David himself. So while we understand that some of this is Isaiah speaking about God talking to him. We also know. That in the answer God gives Isaiah, who felt like he'd labored in vain, who felt like he had, nothing was worth it, that. The justice wasn't coming. God spoke specifically to him and gave him a word beyond him. And I think God does that a lot of times with the prophets. I think sometimes he does that with us too, gives us words beyond us. The servant is the one that will be the light to the nations. His servant. Peter uses that phrase intentionally. Isaiah fifty-two, thirteen through fifteen.
See how my servant will succeed. He will be raised up, exalted, highly honored. Just as many were appalled at him because he was so disfigured, that he didn't even seem human. And simply no ma, no longer looked like a man. So now he will startle many nations because of him. Kings will be speechless, but they will see what they had not been told. They will ponder things they had never heard.
Now there's a part of this prophecy that is about the nation Israel herself. That the nation Israel herself was beaten beyond recognition. She's been in the diaspora, she's kicked out, she was. Nearly destroyed, but look where she is now. She is a nation again, so that. We will have, we have this whole thing about Israel herself as a nation, not looking like a nation anymore. But that God raises her back up. But this is also about the Messiah of Israel. That he will be disfigured. And Peter references this on purpose, my servant. Isaiah fifty-three, one through five.
Who has believed our report, and to whom was he? The arm of Adonai revealed, for he grew up before him as a tender plant and as a root out of the dry ground. He has no form or splendor that we should look upon. Him nor appearance that we should desire him. Despised and rejected by men, a man of pains and knowing sickness. And as one whom, whom the face is hidden, being despised, and we did not consider him. Truly, he has borne our sickness and carried our pains, yet we reckoned him stricken. Smitten by Elohim and afflicted, but he has pierced for our transgression. He was crushed for our wickedness. The chasten, chast, chastisement for our peace was upon him, and by his stripes we are healed.
And verses six through thirteen, Isaiah fifty-three.
We all like sheep went astray, we turned each one to his own way, yet Adonai laid on him the guilt of all of us. Though mistreated, he was submissive, he did not open his mouth. Like a lamb led to be slaughtered, like a sheep silent before its shears, and did not open his mouth. After forcible arrest, arrest and sentencing, he was taken away, and none of his generation protested. His being cut off from the land of the living for the crimes of my people, who deserved the punishment themselves. He was given a grave among the wicked, in his death, he was a rich man. Although he had done no violence and had said nothing deceptive. Yet it pleased Adonai to crush him with illness, to see if, if he would present himself as a guilt offering. If he does, he will see his offspring and he will prolong his days, and at his hand, Adonai's desire will be accomplished. After his ordeal, he will see satisfaction. By his knowing, pain and sacrifice, my righteous servant makes us righteous, makes many righteous. It is for their sins that he suffers. Therefore, I will assign him a share with the great, he will divide the spoil with the mighty. For having exposed himself to death and being counted among the sinners. While actually bearing the sin of many and interceding, interceding for the offenders.
I have heard a rumor. In Christianity, which I think is kinda funny. That Isaiah fifty-three doesn't exist in the Tanakh. That's a rumor. It's a rumor, it is there, it is here. This is a copy of the Tanakh. It's from a, a series called Sacred Writings, and this guy actually has put together the writings of several groups. Um, including Judaism. So this, his first volume one is Judaism's Tanakh, and then he has a New Testament for Christianity and. And, um, he even does a book for Islam, um, for the Quran. He's, he's written out a book of Confucius things and, um, Buddhism and Hinduism, all that stuff together, but. This is a, an authorized version of the Tanakh. Um, Isaiah fifty-three is right here. Don't let anyone tell you the Tanakh does not have Isaiah fifty-three. The Old Testament has it. In the Jewish traditional writings, it is here. Where it does not, where it is not anymore, is in the Hafteh portions that are a part of the Humash. The Humash is the first five books. Plus the special readings, the Hafteh portions, and special readings for some of the, the holy days, okay? That's the Humash, it is not in the Humash. But then neither is a lot of the rest of it. Because the Humash is specific to the Torah portions that are read in the synagogue. There was a season in Judaism. Where it is believed that this passage was part of the Hafteh portions, but it isn't anymore. Probably because, well, let's see. Kinda describes somebody pretty well, doesn't it? And it kind of. It's been used by missionaries over the years to browbeat Jewish people and to believe in Yeshua. It is about Mesiah. There are some who will, in Judaism, will try to tell you it's not, but it is definitely about Yeshua. It is about the one who is called his servant. My servant will do this. Who's believed our report of it, who, to whom has the arm of Adonai been revealed? And then he describes the servant that God has given. Describing Yeshua to a T. Rejected, a man of sorrows, acquainted with grief, people despised him. It describes the process of Messiah. This is part of who Peter is referring to when he says. The God of Abraham, Isaac and Jacob, the God of our fathers, has glorified his servant, Yeshua. Whose name did Isaiah write in? The God of Abraham, Isaac and Jacob. The God of his fathers. Isaiah specifies who the servant is, what he's gonna look like, what's gonna happen. And by using the phrase, his servant, Peter brings all of that into view. For us to understand who this Yeshua is. Why? In the world. In the name of Yeshua was this healing done? Because it says right back here, because of him, there will be healing. The chastisement of our peace is on him, and by his stripes, we are healed. By his being beaten, we're gonna be healed, he's pierced because of our transgressions. Peter is referring to that specifically when he says, it's through his servant, Yeshua. The one you handed over and disowned. Well, gee, he was despised and rejected. That's exactly what he's saying. You despised him, you rejected him. You disowned him before Pilate, though he had decided to release him. But you rejected the holy and righteous one. And asked for a murderer to be granted to you, that's in verse fourteen. Holy and righteous one, that even connects us with a couple of other, with another passage. And that is in Psalm sixteen-ten, and I have that one. In Psalm sixteen. David is writing. Um, keep me safe, oh God, for in you I have found pasture, I have found shelter. I say to Adonai, you are my Lord, I have no good apart from you. There, there is this place that David is writing from his heart about himself. But in what he writes. There is more. Verse five, Adonai is my portion of my cup, you cast my lot. My boundary lines fall in pleasant places, surely my heritage is beautiful. I will bless Adonai who counsels me, even at night, my heart instructs me. I have set Adonai always before me, since he is at my right hand, so I will not be shaken. Verse nine of chapter sixteen of Psalms. So my heart is glad and my soul rejoices, my body also rests secure. Verse ten. For you will not abandon my soul to shield the grave. Nor let your faithful one see the pit or destruction. You make known to me the path of life. Abundance of joys are in your presence, eternal pleasures at your right hand. Wonder how he translates that, because I learned it slightly different in the way I had it translated. Psalm. Is it phrased differently in, in yours? Psalm sixteen. Verse ten. Let's see what the different translations say, because sometimes those words make a big difference. Yeah, this one says, you will not abandon me to shield, or let your faithful one see the pit.
This is for you, do not leave my being in the grave, neither let your kind one see corruption.
The grave and corruption, is your saying?
This is for you will not abandon me to show. You will not let your abyss.
See the abyss.
I like that one.
Yeah, that is good. The concept behind this is that the body will not be corrupted. Now, we all know that David's grave was not too far away from where Peter was speaking. At the time Peter was speaking. They knew where David's grave was. His body had decomposed, it had been corrupted. He stayed in the grave. Yeshua, however. It says, don't let your faithful one see the pit. Yeshua is the faithful one, Yeshua is the righteous one, Yeshua is the holy one. He is the one who did not stay in the grave. His body did not see corruption. His body was raised. It did not stay there. Peter. Who looked at all of these men, just, just like the day that the Holy Spirit came and they were up in the temple and. And they were all accusing of being drunk and stuff like that, and he didn't waste any words, he didn't mince any words. He doesn't mince any words here either, does he? He doesn't say, oh, somebody else did this and we're suffering for it. He is very blunt. He says very specifically. It's in the name of the person that you denied. The person that you disowned. And then he uses this really interesting phrase in the next verse. You rejected the holy righteous one, asked for a murderer to be granted to you, in verse fifteen, it says. You killed the author of life. The one God raised from the dead, and we are witnesses of it. It's in Acts, chapter three, verse fifteen, you killed the author of life. Not only did his body not see the grave. Not only did his body not see corruption, but Peter is saying here that he's the very author of life. The author, the originator, the source. The very source of life was given death. But just like Psalm sixteen-ten says, he did not see corruption, he was raised from the dead.
This one's, but you killed the leader of HAI.
Hai, it's life.
Yeah, hi.
I have, I have earrings that have the, 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 the. Hai. The leader of life. He is life itself. And he died. Of course, he didn't stay dead. Now I'm gonna digress, just like he did in the teacher, what he wrote, this is side note. And, and I wanna mention it, because sometimes people talk about dates and they talk about when this happened. And we don't know for sure when this happened, or for sure when that happened. We don't know exactly what year Yeshua died. Well, we don't, but we do have a ten year period that we're pretty, pretty positive of. And the reason is this. It says, it names the person who condemned him. The person that they used. The one you handed over and disor, disowned before Pilate, Pontius Pilate. Pontius Pilate was the fifth in the series of governors of the Roman province of Judea. None of them were particularly known for being good people. Pontius Pilate was probably one of the worst. He was one of the worst. He was brought into power. According to the historical records of Rome, which are pretty accurate, they have dates. That they kept of many things, very specific dates. The calendar, we have all, going all the way back, now we've shifted the calendar. The calendar, we have all, going all the way back. Now, we've shifted the calendar, but the years haven't shifted necessarily. You know what April Fools comes from, right? The shift of the beginning of the year from that date to January first. But if you wanted that date to be the start of the year, which by the way, came out of Judaism because of the first month. Let this month be the first of months to you, month of Aviv. Well, that had been picked up, and that was the first. But let's get as far away from Judaism, Judaism as we can, and let's shift, and let's not have spring be the first of the year. Let's have middle of winter be the first of the year, and move back to the middle of winter. That was, and, and if you consider, if you wanted to hold on to the other date, then you were considered a fool. That's where the whole concept of April Fools comes from. You're an April fool, because you believe this is the first of the year. Yeah, I did a research paper on that when I was in high school.
Someone told me that with Rosh Hashanah.
Rosh Hashanah is
So you believe this is the new year? It's not.
Well, it is. It's the new year for the counting of the years, but for the counting of the months, that's in Aviv. That's a Passover, that's two weeks before Passover, fifteen days before. That's the beginning of the months, the beginning of years is Rosh Hashanah. And it, just like we have school years and we have
See, I thought it was the beginning of the year back then, of the year, yeah.
Yeah, it's the beginning of the month.
The whole thing about, you know, springtime, I guess. Yeah, it's confused.
It, it is confusing. It, it gets confusing. There's four New Years in Judaism, but the two that are counted the most that, that stayed with Judaism, because we don't have tithes and offerings for the temple anymore, um, have to do with, with Passover and with Rosh Hashanah in the fall. But Pontius Pilate came into power in twenty-six A.D. That's what the calendars say. Um, he was rigid, he was reckless, he was ruthless. He was one that tended to stir up civil disobedience instead of, um, trying to use diplomacy. He was, he used crosses instead of diplomacy. Um, he slaughtered people, um, which actually was against Roman policy. You couldn't put someone to death without a trial. Even if they weren't Roman, you weren't supposed to do that. Um, Roman policy actually was trying to rule the empire in an enlightened way. Yeah, they were a bit cruel, but they weren't nearly as bad as some of them had been before. Um, they actually were looking at things more of a diplomatic methodology. But he was also removed from power by Caesar in thirty-six A.D. So he was brought into power in twenty-six A.D. He was removed from power in thirty-six A.D. And the reason he was removed from power was because there were some Samaritans that wanted to go to Mount Gerizim to meet with a prophet. And it's a, it's story in historical documents. It's in Roman history as well as in Jewish history. And as they were assembled and were going to meet this prophet, he had them slaughtered. And he didn't have any real reason to. So Caesar removed him from power because he couldn't defend that bloodthirsty act. He could not defend it.
He seemed like he didn't really want to crucify, you know, Yeshua, though. He sent him back. It seems like he was, you know, he was force, his hand was force. I thought maybe that's why he washed his hands afterwards.
Yeah, he wants to, he, he didn't want the guilt. He didn't want the guilt associated with that. He was bloodthirsty. He had enough guilt of his own. Why did he need that one added on to it? I mean, that's kind of the idea, I think. But what we know is that he is the one that did have him crucified. We know that he came into power in twenty-six A.D. He left power in thirty-six A.D. So sometime in that ten-year period, we know absolutely for sure, in that ten-year period, Yeshua was crucified. This is one of the ways that we know when some of the events take place. Um, remember, I, I talked about this with, um, with Purim. The man by the pool that was healed by the Pool of Salom was probably healed at Purim time. And the reason we know that is because he was healed on a Sabbath. And it says that Yeshua was in Jerusalem for the festival, but it doesn't name the festival. He was in Jerusalem for a festival, doesn't name it. But the festival was on a Sabbath. Well, the only festival that actually fell on a Sabbath within that ten-year frame was Purim. That's how we know that that was Purim. But if you don't do your research, if you don't dig, if you don't look, if you don't study it out like this, you would have no clue that that man was healed on Purim. It was for Purim he was healed. Wow, that gives Purim a whole different meaning. You know, he'd been laying there waiting for the angel to come, and, and Yeshua says, do you even wanna be well? Oh, well, nobody's here to help me, poor me. Well, come on, get up. Get up, pick up your bed, walk, come on, get out of here. I mean, you know, and this was a Purim at the time that we're celebrating a hidden miracle. Someone who did what was right. But the way we know that is because of this timing issue. Pilate, by the leading of the people, had Yeshua put to death. And even Peter doesn't lay the blame at Pilate. We wanna blame the Romans sometimes, because that way we don't have to blame the Jews, right? Peter doesn't blame Rome. He's not blaming Pilate. He's saying, you guys did it. You disowned him. You had him put to death. You killed the author of life, and we are his witnesses, and now, through faith in the name of Yeshua, the one you killed, this man has been strengthened. The one you see and know. Indeed, the faith through Yeshua has given this man perfect health in front of you all. You killed him. Look what he's doing. You had him dead. Look, he's given this man perfect health, right here, right in front of you. Peter is saying something pretty specific. Through Yeshua, perfect healing. The Greek word, holochlerion, which I'm not sure I can pronounce right at all, translated, perfect healing, really is a term that means whole. He is made whole. Completely whole. He's been made perfect. He's been restored to wholeness. Through Yeshua. And I think it's wonderful. Here's this example, a man who was not whole, who was lame, who couldn't go in the temple because of his weakness, because of his lameness. Couldn't go in the temple. He had to sit outside. How many years had he sat outside the temple and heard them praising inside and said, feel sorry for me, give me money? I can't even go in. I have to stay out here. God hates me. Well, God didn't hate him. God just can't have a lack of wholeness in his presence, and through Yeshua, he's made whole. Gets to go in, gets to participate, gets to be part of the whole celebration. Gets to join them. Faith in the resurrected author of life. To me, this is such a beautiful picture of salvation. Isn't that what salvation is about? Isn't this the good news? That we who should die, we who are broken, we who have done nothing to be able to enter the company of faith, have been given wholeness through the death of the author of life. Because he was raised. It's an absolute perfect picture of salvation. To get to enter that place of worship, to enter in, he didn't do anything to earn it. All he did was cry out for mercy. He cried out for alms. He cried out for money. He was a beggar. Help me? Can I have help? Can you help me? Can you help me? Who knows? I don't know what word he used. We don't know what word he used. Can you help me? Well, I don't have any silver or gold, but I can help you. When we cry out to God for help, He may not give us silver or gold, although sometimes I wish He would. He may not even give us physical healing when we cry out to Him. But what we, what He will do is bring us into His presence and give us that kind of wholeness. Faith in the resurrected one that brings wholeness. That's salvation. That's the perfect picture. Even though we are the ones who killed him. If we'll have faith in Him. And I just, to me, I got to that point and I went, what more is there? What else is there? I mean, I know there's more verses, and, and we'll go on from verse seventeen next week, but I was just like, wow. Men of Israel, why are you amazed at this? Why do you stare at us? As if by our power or godliness, we'd made this man walk. Yeah, right. He can come into the presence because of us? I don't think so. Oh, the God of Abraham, Isaac, Jacob, the God of our fathers, has glorified his servant, Yeshua. The one you handed over, disowned before Pilate, though he had decided to release him, but you rejected the holy and righteous one and asked for a murderer to be granted to you. You killed the author of life, the one who God raised from the dead. We are witnesses of that. And now, through faith in the name of Yeshua, his name has strengthened this man whom you see and know. Indeed, the faith through Yeshua has given this man perfect health in front of you all. The authority, the name, the righteous one. He's our redeemer. And next week, we're gonna see what else he has to say to them about. Now, what could they do? If you're the one that killed him, now what? You killed him, look what he can do, now what? That will be next week. But between now and then, we know that we can be made whole. I think that's the primary thing. Father, I wanna thank you for your word. I wanna thank you for the encouragement that is here. The beautiful picture of our salvation. Brought about by the suffering servant, the one that you have raised. The one who sits at your right hand. The one whose authority has been given. And because you gave him authority, he gave us authority. Thank you, Father. You are so good to us, and we are so grateful. In the name of Yeshua, the authority He's given us, you say amen.
Amen.
Let it be. And that was about half of the lesson.